...through the questions, but if any other questions do come up, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself or my colleague, Joel, who's our state relations liaison for Maine. So, thank you again.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We're going to take about a five-minute break just so we can transfer over from the presentation to the work session, but don't go too far. When I mean five minutes, I mean literally five minutes. Thank you.
George is so annoying. Hello. Little low on the low side. Channel two, little higher. Test one. Hello? Okay, I got my mic that I can talk into. And this one's wireless this time. It came a little bit more prepared than before. What? Yeah, one second here. Test one, two. Test one, two.
Good afternoon. Welcome back, everybody. I see some people have a more interesting version of five minutes. I'm going to open up the work session on LD 1977 and our committee analyst, Sam Senna.
All right. So I do have a couple of things that Alyssa passed out. So first, the committee had asked during the last work session if I could dig up some of the warranties as well as language on authorized repair programs for some of the larger retailers of, not retailers, manufacturers, rather, of cell phones. So you have a packet that looks like this with some of the standard warranty language as well as in the back, information on authorized repair programs. I put little stars next to the language around items that are not covered by warranties, because I think that's probably the more relevant information. The other item that I passed out is a memo that was emailed to me this morning by the Consumer Technology Association, and it has to do with warranties and whether repairing screens would void a warranty under current federal law, specifically the Magnuson Moss Act. That is, everybody should have that in your packet for your review. And the other, the last item is the amendment, and so a couple of changes to the amendment from the last time you saw it. So this is the amendment that was originally put forth by Representative Handy. So you'll see that the title has been changed to more accurately reflect the current state of the amendment. And the other change, if you go to page four in the back, I added some, an attempt at some language around warranties, so making clear that changing out a screen or having a third-party entity do the, do a screen change wouldn't void the warranty. I think that the thing I would want to emphasize to the committee is that, I'm not sure that this makes much of a difference, if any difference, in the current state of things because the Magnuson Moss Act, I think, would already get us here. I'm not sure that this language takes us any further than federal law already does. And I think that the second thing is that this is, this warranty language is kind of taking a little bit of a sidestep from the original, I think, intent of the law, which has to do with information provided by original equipment manufacturers and, and actual equipment provided by original equipment manufacturers as opposed to warranty. So I think they're, they're related issues, but they're also separate issues. So I just wanted to, to make sure that that's clear.
And did we receive anything back from the Attorney General on the questions we had?
They were going to get us something today. I haven't seen it yet. I just emailed them to see if they had anything, and I don't have a reply yet, but they were, they were working on it, and they were, they were planning to get the committee some additional information on both the language of the amendment and what they thought about that, as well as the warranty issue.
Absolutely.
That is pending.
I was going to say, I was really hoping to hear from the AG before I move forward in any direction and open up to discussion, but I really don't feel comfortable taking any action on this without hearing back from the Attorney General, especially the questions that came not only from the public hearing, but from the several work sessions that the members have brought up. So, hearing that, anyone have any further questions or anything that you still feel like we're not? And thank you, Mr. Senna. This is incredible work and incredible compilation of everything. Representative Tekes.
Thank you. So, here we are. We're working on, on creating language for a Maine state law that does nothing different that the federal law already does. Is that roughly correct?
I, I don't think it, I don't think it legally gets you to a different place than the federal law currently does.
You say it so much nicer than I do. So, and then, and of course, we've got this pared down to just cell phone screens now, which, if I remember right, I don't know, was it 10 months ago, I think, we heard this bill, it seems like? A long time ago, anyway. I think all three of the sponsors actually walked it back to, that's what they thought they were originally going after anyway. And then since then, just with a simple Google Bing search, whatever your preference, I've found dozens of businesses within the state, all over the state, that actually do, while you wait, within an hour, cellphone screen replacements, which I thought that's sort of what we're trying to get at, because that was an issue. There's one Apple Store, well, it's not just the Apple Store that does these things, so... So, anyway, I guess that was a clarification that I was looking for. We're not real, we're not really expanding anything on the federal law. All the rules already exist. The cellphone screen problem doesn't seem to be a problem. So, I'll be interested to see where we go.
Representative Bevine?
First, Mr. Senna, thank you. This is wonderful, what you've provided. So I guess the opposite question I have is, if it does not legally further the case, does our law, or does the recommendation, is it written in conflict to the law, meaning that it, does it weaken it? Does it somehow go up against that, that it, you know, that it shouldn't?
I don't think it conflicts or impedes the federal law in any way.
Representative Moriarty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to summarize, Sam, as I understand it, if an unauthorized repair person replaces a cellphone screen, that does not void the overall warranty on the product itself?
Unless they, unless they damaged it in any way during the repair.
All right.
But yes, I think that's an accurate statement.
And as a follow-up, do you have an idea, or perhaps does anybody on the committee have an idea, of how prevalent damage to screens is and how often they need to be replaced? I'm sure it varies with the user. There may not be uniform data available, but this seems to be clearly a very small piece of what was originally a very, very large diorama.
That I'm not sure about. If you have a two-year-old like I do, it's probably more likely than in other cases, but, but I'm not sure about that.
I, I would add, I think it depends on the product. It depends on its life cycle. I mean, mine's gone down the brewery stairs several times, and somehow, fine. So I think, I think that'd be a little bit harder number to divulge, but I think we've all had a story or an experience with the device.
So I want to give a disclaimer. I am by no means technology savvy at all. I really rely on the geniuses that put, you know, fix these. But I did get a chance to actually speak to what I call is a, my Sheldon Cooper friend, who happens to be one of those Apple geniuses. And what he is explaining to answer the gentleman's question is that when they put a new screen on, there's a calibration process in which the screen has to be calibrated to the touchstone features. So there is some, some integration or kind of crossover between the two. So there is some, you know, some things that can happen as part of that, and if they're not calibrated properly, because if they don't have the right calibration machine, then it can actually hurt the, hurt the phone in the long run, or even in the short term, or something could happen. So that's about as limited as I know about the technology side of it. But there is a connectivity between the screen and then the technology for touched, whatever they call that, touchtone, not touchtone, but touch, whatever.
Thank you, Representative. Any further questions? I think I would just add, since we haven't had the response from the Attorney General, if you wouldn't mind maybe forwarding a few more questions their way. I think mine's more from a consumer protection perspective, looking at the information we've received. One would be, you know, if a consumer does repair their screen, and you do believe it'd be covered under the Magnus Moss Warranty Act, but a company won't recognize that, is that something that they're able to then report that to our Consumer Protection Agency? And what ramifications and protections does Maine state law offer to that consumer? And then I think the flip side would be, if it is damaged by a third-party provider, what recourse is there within Maine law for the consumer as well? I think it's just, you know, making sure that, you know, when someone's trying to repair their product, that, you know, we all have their back and make sure there's the best step forward.
Sure.
Any other questions? Representative Handy?
I moved to table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of tabling? It is unanimous of those present in voting. That concludes our work session, LD 1977. For those who are interested in this bill, make sure if you'd like to receive future communications of when our next work session will be, please check in with our committee clerk. She'll make sure you're on the interested parties list, and we'll be trying to, as soon as we, you know, have word back from the Attorney General, trying to move forward. And up next, we do have our supplement, sup, I need the right to repair my own language right now. The supplemental budget review, and we do have the Commissioner of DCD joining for us for that as well.
So I'll just briefly walk the committee through the process, and then DCD can, can walk you through the substance.
Okay. Hey. Okay, so we are going to continue this outside, so stay on the stream if you can.
Just to let everyone be able to sign up and get a moment, I just want to make sure that we give them a chance to sign up with the Commissioner.
I'm going to sign you up, okay?
Sorry about that. Everyone, let's take about a three-minute break.
So everybody out there is going up to their senators and speaking to them, I imagine, about this. Those are all Mayners that watch my channel.
Hey. How you doing?
All right.
You travel, you travel all the way from New York to Little Short.
I've been there five years.
Is it, does that end up being this way? You go to a place where it's private, then that works?
Yep, every now and then.
Do you travel back to New York?
Yeah. And Boston, I actually just moved out of the city.
Did it?
Now there's going to be a vote against Senator Plow, so.
You show up to 100 of them, you get lucky.
Well, I don't know what kind of satisfaction I'm going to give, but I know you're doing good work, and the committee at the very least, if they end up doing nothing for you. Yeah. I don't think it'll be a waste if you get nothing out of the box.
None of it's ever wasted.
Yeah. But yeah, good to meet you. Good to come to Maine.
So we're going to move this outside and talk about this, so stay on the stream.
Yeah, that video you posted about how to get, how you really help us.
Did you get a response? Did you get a response from any?
Yeah, I have. But it was like, also like giving dates or, you know, these kinds of things, like getting the information out is probably the most important thing that you can do.
Yeah.
Because like, I guarantee you, everyone here, or at least most of us knew about this because of you.
Awesome. Put a mic in someone's face. I want to hear what that's saying.
What?
Like, I mean, everyone here, like, most likely came here because they saw one of your videos.
Awesome. Yeah, it's, it's a shame that it winds up being a seven minutes where they don't know the diff, what Trutone is, but what you going to do?
How easy it is to just write a letter and send it in.
You wrote a letter?
Yeah, I wrote a letter. You write a letter and you send it in. You can submit it electronically. The committee chair specifically said she prefers paper, so all the better to, and there are rules here in Maine, you want, need to bring 20 copies of it.
20 copies?
20 photoc, 20 photocopies handed to the clerk, and then it gets added to their folders.
Awesome.
So fabulous way to make sure that people get, people in the committee get additional testimony, because it's still possible to submit.
Yeah, I should print mine, because I emailed it, but that may have just gone into nowhere.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
All right.
Because what they show on the website is only the things that have been submitted before the initial bill. Afterwards, they don't then post it to the website, the additional testimony, but it is distributed out to the rest of them.
Interesting. Good to know. Oh, I'm going to keep packing. Good to see you again.
Yeah. Thanks.
want to get that in and out and not waste time. So, just to, once again, recap.
Nah. Can you hear me?
You know what happened at the second half of camcorder?
You'd have to give it to a genius. It would brick. They would have some sort of center in there saying the velocity of the item exceeded a certain thing. Therefore...
Alright. Yeah, I dropped my camcorder on the way out, so that was... that was... Great job. I'm a jackass. So here we are, we're outside of the thing. That was quite a lush trip for nine minutes of people who don't know what true tone versus touch tone is. What are you...
What?
Look at all the people that we had show up.
It's amazing.
Hello, internet. How you doing? What are you, Union? Hi, how you doing? How's it going?
Hello. I'm not on camera yet. Hey, watch it with his lips.
Just fuck it, I'll do it myself. Alright, so these are all the people that showed up, and they all brought testimony with themselves, so check it out. Look, he's got a paper. He's got a paper. He's got a paper. He's got a business card. He's got a hat. Also, thank you to him. I wasn't able to get a cab, but he managed to give me a ride at the last minute, since we know Uber's. MVP, Mr. Anthony. And look at all the other people that showed up, too. Look at that. Look at all these people. All for support of the bill. I think it took longer for them to drive here than for them to talk about it. Yeah, the guy prepared me for it. He said, you know, like, "I hope you don't get discouraged from it," but yeah, this is... I don't want you to feel like you wasted your time, but this is probably not gonna go much of anywhere.
It was worth a shot, though.
Yeah.
The other senator that I just talked to was talking about, you know, why should he have to... why should I have to do this, and why should I have to, you know... it's the price of doing business is the, you know, price of competing with Apple. And it's... if that's the price of doing business, we're never gonna win, because Apple has way more money than we do.
What does he mean by "price of doing business"? The cost of doing business is that you don't have access to anything, or the cost of doing business is that you have to get schematics off of shady Russian websites?
Probably... neither of those things were discussed. I did it.
I broke YouTube.
My ex-wife is directly related to that entire New England spectrum failure.
Not anymore. I hired a Union videographer here. That's why.
So I'm one of the few local repair businesses that are operating here, you know, a few minutes down the road. I watch your videos, and I definitely appreciate what you do, because it's... and I've done, you know, soldering based on your recommendations. I'm actually one of the few people in the county that will actually solder a motherboard. So it's... we need this stuff. It's... I can't tell you how much we need it, because last... just last night, I was looking for an A1311, and I was looking at the motherboard and trying to figure out what piece fell off where, and there's no schematics. Of course, there's not a schematic, because the Apple doesn't want you to have a schematic, because then you'd be able to fix the stuff that they fix for $1,000.
Now, you said that one of the gentlemen in there said that, "Well, this is the cost of doing business with Apple." What is the cost? What did he mean by "this is the cost"?
I think he means that because you're going to... how did he put it? He put it with... he put it that... because he put in a bid for a job. He's an entrepreneur as well, and he lost the bid, and he lost the money for the... just to put in the bid that the customer backed out at the last minute, and just to put in a bid, he had to put money in. So that's... he's saying that you have to put up certain things, and you might not win.
What are we putting up exactly?
That's a good question. If you can answer that question, you're a better person than I am.
Which representative said that?
The first one on the left. He's on this list. He's on...
Oh, yeah.
He's on this paper.
I... Aaron said that?
What was the...
Oh, was it a woman or a guy?
A man.
Okay, Herbig is a woman, so we may have the list wrong here.
I was so busy coughing during that interview that I had to...
I know which one you're talking about. I have the name list at home. So what... if you grade on a scale of 1 to 10, how well the representatives understand the bill, our problem, or what it is we're going for, what do you rate that on a scale of 1 to 10?
Maybe a 3, maybe. I mean, they're talking about screens, like, screens are the only thing in an iPhone.
And he's also still talking about this warranty thing, which is, well, it is a warranty law federally, Magnuson Moss, which says that you cannot void the warranty if someone tries to fix it themselves. And they think that that's what this bill is going for, which is not entirely. This entire point of this bill is to be able to access parts for out-of-warranty repairs that we're not able to access without going through all the shade tree supply chains that we do.
Well, that's what I mentioned to the gentleman in the first place. I said, "This bill directly affects my livelihood, because I make money on this." I'm a legitimate shop down in Topsom, and when people come in to me, they need me to get the parts that they want, and they need me to get the stuff that they need. It's not, you know, it's... just to talk to them, it seems like they're completely out of touch, just because they think that the cellphone screen is the biggest portion of the cellphone. And it's... I made the analogy. I said, "That's like saying all the car is a tire." You know, it's just one little tiny piece of a much larger spectrum. I mean, computers aren't even listed in the law. They're not even listed anymore.
Yeah, what kills me is that they... after two work sessions, one hearing, and a bunch of people contacting them and reaching out to them, they still believe that the bill is about warranty. And when they said that, "No, this doesn't have anything to do with warranty," Magnuson Moss says that you cannot void the warranty. So that... when Nathan Proctor sends over the information regarding Magnuson Moss, he was doing that to say, "Look, if you replace a part, that can't void the warranty, so everybody talking about warranty is ridiculous." And then the CTA guy sent them information about warranty to say, "Oh, no, there's already a law for this. See, they mentioned that." So he's purposely obfuscating things, which is hysterical. He knows that he's speaking to people that don't understand the bill, so he's just kinda like using that to get it dismissed.
Well, if you look at the majority of the people in the room, it's... they have a very cold look on their face, just because they... that's what's happened so far, is that they kinda become dumb to this, or not dumb, sorry, numb to it. Whereas, we've thrown a bunch of different language into it, and Maine has some very interesting warranty laws, too, so they don't wanna worry about... they want to get word from the Attorney General, when in actuality, "My god, I just wanna get a part. Just give me an Apple something." You know, and we can't. We have to go to South Korea to get them, you know, as opposed to being able to just order them and get them.
What's the name of your business for everybody's gonna watch?
I'm Nerd Barn at www.nerdbarn.tech, T-E-C-H, and I'm the tech repair person for the area, and I'm the only person in the county that does Apple stuff.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for coming up.
You know, every fall, these polit...
He's looking at her phone. You are so fired. You're not getting a cookie. You are not getting a cookie. Give me this. You're not getting a cookie. People wonder in the last video, it was like, "Why are you not looking at the person? It's so rude that you keep looking at the camera."
What? No, the camera's facing you.
No cookie.
It seems strange that every fall, these politicians, they come knocking at my door, "Vote for me. Listen to me. I'm here for you," but they're not really listening to the people in Maine. It seems like they're allowing these corporations, established corporations here in Maine, create laws to eliminate their competition. And that's what really bugs me, is that they come knocking at my door and say, "Vote for me. I'm here for you," but it doesn't seem like they really listen to us.
Yeah, again, when they said, "Well, the CTA contacted us, and they talked about Magnuson Moss already being here, so why do we need to consider this?" What about the other 70 emails that you got from all the other people? How many other people showed up and emailed? I emailed them and sent... I emailed them a nice little PDF signing, every single little thing. Everybody here wanted to talk to them. Not a single person in there said, "Oh, yeah, we got an email from a constituent that said this." No, it's, "We got an email from CTA." Why is CTA more important than you? Does CTA vote here?
If CTA doesn't go knocking, don't vote. People vote for them, not corporations, they're not companies. It's the people who elect them, and I don't understand why they're not listening to the people.
Eh? Anything?
Hi. So do you just want me to introduce myself, or...
No, what do you do?
So I'm an IT administrator in Bangor, Maine. Maine is very much a technological desert, kind of. I mean, if you wanna go buy parts, you might have Joe Smo's, you know, place down the road that you can go to, but in general, there might be one shop within 20 miles that you can go and buy parts. So repair is something that we need to keep alive in the state of Maine. And unfortunately, a lot of what we're talking in here, with the certifications and the warranty specifications, kinda goes to show that a lot of the repairs is becoming monopolized, and it's not necessarily saying, "You're not allowed to do it." It's that if any money goes into the repair process, it has to make its way back to Apple. And we do like to pick on Apple. I'm sure that that's, you know, one of the biggest companies, biggest offenders, but there are other companies that do it as well. So with our legislators, I mean, I've sent out emails to several of them, and even speaking to one just a second ago, he said that, "Oh, well, I can't get into my email. I haven't been able to get into that computer, and it's only accessible on one." So I've been fixing up a house down the road from him for, like, the past six months, and he gave me his personal email and his personal cellphone. So, I mean, coming in today and speaking to them seems like it's probably gonna be the only way to talk to them, is to speak to them personally. I mean, I had no idea that there was anything going on in terms of a public hearing until the day that it happened, and I'm sure that a lot of people my age had no idea either. So it's not until we see, like, your channel that something's going on, and then suddenly everyone's working, or, you know, you can't get there. And if we had any kind of heads up, I mean, this is probably one of the bigger things that's gonna pass in the state that'll affect people for the next, you know, 20 years. Massachusetts just passed right-to-repair legislation, what was it, a week and a half, two, three weeks ago?
They did for cars in 2012. There's a bill that was introduced last year, and it just may... I think it just waded its way out of one committee without dying, so now it just has to be put on the floor of the Senate for a vote.
So that's exactly what I saw, and they're asking, "Has anyone done the footwork so that we don't have to go through and do this?" And it really shouldn't be that way.
Has anybody done my job?
Exactly.
Part of it, I think, is their concerns that they are going to get reamed legis... not legislatively, litigative-wise. They don't wanna... yeah, they don't want litigation against the state or their government, which has a very small budget for dealing with it. It's gonna take away from the budget from dealing with everything else. So they wanna see if anybody else who has those resources has set a precedent. And I get it. I get that as a concern. I just don't get why you read the CTAs and from... like, how many people have emailed you from the hearing to the work session, and the first thing that you show up with is the CTA?
Exactly. And I mean, there's plenty of companies that their professional job is to show up, you know, businesses and these, you know, these meetings to say, you know, "We oppose this, and, you know, it's bad for your community." And, you know, when you schedule something for the middle of a workday, and no one knows it's happening, you know, of course, you're not gonna have anyone show up to do anything. And I'm glad, at least this time, we didn't hear any of them saying, you know, "Oh, well, nobody showed up," than we did last time.
Yeah, people showed up, but did they actually listen?
No. And you don't really get a chance to do anything here when you can show up and get one day off, a week, or something like that, to be able to show up. I mean, I take a day off from work, and it was like five minutes of that, and we could've... they scheduled an hour. So, I mean, what's the harm of saying, you know, "We scheduled an hour. We only used five minutes. Let's hear from some of the people that took the time to show up."
Yeah, there was about nine minutes of a work session. They scheduled an hour for it. There's like 10 people here that are residents of Maine this time, so there's not that excuse that there's, you know, all the people that showed up are not here from the state. It doesn't actually seem to have made a difference.
No, no, it doesn't. And that's kinda painful, especially hearing that they're changing the wording for the bill to only include phone screens. There's plenty of other things that can be used as an example. I mean, you've done a video on it, the fingerprint button on the front of the... on the front of the screen. If you replace the screen, or if you replace the button, eventually, when you update your phone, it checks your firmware, it checks your hardware IDs, and, you know, suddenly that doesn't match, and then they just brick it. It doesn't work anymore.
Yeah, the... they said... I forgot what I was about to say. Oh, yeah, they said, "Well, cellphone screen seems to already be not an issue." But... so they changed the scope of the bill to the one thing that is not an issue, and then they said, "Well, since that's not an issue, let's throw it out."
And that's a prime example of...
Government'll work for you.
Government'll work for you, exactly. So, I mean, I wish that we'd had time to speak. There's plenty of different examples that you can use, but, I mean, it just didn't seem like that was in the cards today, and I'm hoping to have another public hearing so we can actually come out and...
Yeah, hopefully, there's some more progress made in other states, so that when they say, "Has any other state done the work?", we can say, "Yes, they did." Well, thank you for taking the time, and for wearing a tie.
Oh, thanks.
Hello.
Hi.
You're not wearing a tie, so it's all downhill from here. One second. My camerawoman is on her phone again. Clearly, for people on YouTube who wanna know why I'm rude and I don't look at the person, my camerawoman is on her phone playing taraba all the time. On your phone. No cookie.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just another IT guy that was like... And, you know, I also come from a background in construction and stuff, so for me, like, the... them just immediately discounting tractors in a state that relies on them so heavily is just, like, mind-boggling to me. So like, I was limited... I was already upset when they limited to cellphones, much less screens. Like, screens are... I've never broken a screen, and I've replaced three of them, so like, that doesn't even, like, matter.
Yeah, I mean...
It's not even a big deal. It's the, like, my current phone, this stupid G6 here, last night decided it's no longer gonna charge, because there's water in this USB port, which has no water in it. And, like, where's the documentation for how to troubleshoot that problem? Like, that's the stuff that would be helpful. That's...
Oh, a schematic. Even if there's no document that tells you how to do it, a document that tells you what's set out, so that you know what journey to go on.
Right. And if it exists, which it probably does, where the hell is it? And why isn't that provided? And like, my truck, my F250, I had a flatbed put on it. That's a pretty typical thing you do to a truck.
It would probably explode.
Yeah, right? But now it's got, you know, LED lights, and the turn signals are all screwy, and, you know, so then the dealership wanted 300 bucks to, like, reset the computer so it would recognize LEDs, where I waited a few months and forescan. Somebody somewhere smarter than me figured out what to tell the CAN bus to tell it to change the computer settings so that it recognizes LEDs. Like, why isn't that information just available to us? So that's the stuff that, like, it's like, "Come on, guys."
Yeah, so cellphone screens are not... let's limit the bill to cellphone screens. Oh, cellphone screens are not an issue. The bill addresses cellphone screens. The bill is not an issue. Bye-bye, bill.
Right, yeah.
Behold, effort.
Government logic, I guess? I don't know. And it's really frustrating, because I'm one of the Mainers that emailed them, and they didn't mention that.
They mentioned CTA, though. CTA is the company that runs CES, by the way, the Consumer Electronics Show.
That's frustrating.
They're a nonprofit, by the way. Something tells me they make a little bit more money.
I have a feeling they do, yeah. Yeah, that's like, there's nonprofit hospitals that are profiting so well. Same... it sounds like the same deal.
Yeah, so...
What a mess.
Thank you for taking the time. How are you?
I'm awake. I work overnights at Walmart.
What do you do there?
Stocking shelves all day. Yeah.
I used to do that when I worked at Model Sporting Goods, putting the price tags on the basketballs.
Sounds so much fun. Isn't it so great?
Technology changed and made it easier at all. Do you set the price manually on the thingy when you put?
No, we have a special device that we're supposed to do it with now, except, you know, we can't repair that special device anymore if it goes wrong. We have to send it to the company. Yay!
Walmart has the money for that, though.
Sure.
Did you get to speak to anybody in there?
Uh, one.
On a scale of 1 to 10, what was their understanding of the bill, what we're trying to accomplish, and what you said to them?
Three, maybe four.
What were you expecting?
Three, maybe four.
So it met your expectations.
Unfortunately.
That's great.
The biggest problem that I've seen with this is people like me, who work for these big companies, we have... like, in order for me to get the day off, I have to know three weeks in advance, or it has to fall on my day off for me to show up for these things. I watched when you did the first right-to-repair hearing, and even though I was watching when you were doing the first right-to-repair hearing, I couldn't go, because I had to work that night. I couldn't go to the first... the first regular hearing that they had, the work session, for the same reason.
We only have one camera person.
I wrote to Shadabella, she's my representative. She's my senator.
Erica. That's a senator? Oh, no, a senator, rep.
Sorry, get out of your way. Go ahead, if you have a question. So I was just hoping if you had any questions whatsoever, and you'd like to talk to an actual businessman who this directs immediately, that I'd love to talk to you. Because I am an unauthorized service center, but I've only been doing it for 25 years.
Why are you stuck on menu?
That's the most frustrating part, I think, is just not knowing who to reach out to for some of this stuff.
Yes, I mean, one of my customers came and showed me...
That's Anthony George over there? That's the gentleman that testified in the first hearing. He was the only one that showed up for a pair in addition to myself, and he also gave me a cab ride here, twice, because I couldn't get an Uber, since Uber doesn't exist here.
So Roger, who showed up in the first main hearing, I believe, he actually said, and he made this suggestion, he had to leave early, but he had let me know that there's a thing called a citizens initiative, where you can go around and have people sign a petition, and if you get enough signatures, it can go off to the general ballot. So...
What is it?
That's what I've heard about.
I think I've missed some people. Hi, nice to meet you.
Yeah, but I mean, there's no pins on the back.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Awesome. Were you here for right-to-repair, or were you here for something else?
Right-to-repair, yes.
Oh, cool.
Yes, I think what you're doing is right. And I love that... I love that people are caring about this opportunity for us to learn, to study. I mean, repairing has a large component of learning, and, I mean, I don't know anything, but I have, at one time, fixed computer screens and keyboards by unscrewing the... please don't put...
Erica, turn it... No, that's the point.
Wait, thank you. I appreciate what you're doing very much.
Yeah, he doesn't wanna be on camera.
What, you told me to turn?
Yeah, turn it away.
That's okay.
What's that? Oh, no, you can... you can record me next time when I'm in New Hampshire.
Oh, you're... what are you gonna be doing in New Hampshire?
Well, I'm gonna write a couple of letters.
Do you live here, or...
No, I actually live in New Hampshire.
Oh, cool. That's a long trip.
No, it's only about two hours. Two hours in the freezing rain and slush.
Lovely. Yeah, I had an 11-hour bus ride, and I was... it's one seat in front of this guy that kept talking about how he's gonna beat his wife and kid when he even got back home. It was fun. Lots of fun. Who else did I miss? I probably missed... I got you, 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 you. You! Hey, I remember you from the last one. You should've... their understanding of this seemed to be lower than last time.
Yeah. They're not... I don't think they're entertaining the thought that we should expand this more.
I think they see it as a waste of time. What are your thoughts?
I agree. I feel like we need another... I feel like we need another public hearing, because we have more support room to come now. Like, the knowledge... it's out there, like, I mean, just looking at everyone who came, but we need another public hearing to express all these ideas.
I agree. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Time to go back to hotel? I want food. I want burger. I'm gonna get that burger and I'm definitely not getting you a cookie. That is the worst camera work I've ever seen.
Why? What worse camera work? Okay, hold up. Hold up.
I adjust the camera for every single person myself.
Okay, hold up a second. Wait. Okay, well, I can explain it, okay?
Camera lady is union.
Okay, I'll tell you why. So when you look at... directly at the camera, they have the little screen, right? He's having the screen face him. So I can't stand behind him and see the view because the camera's facing you.
You realize this thing rotates like this, right? So you can just do this. I have to have it face me because my camerawoman is playing.
And you do realize that I had it rotated earlier and then you rotated it towards you.
It rotates both ways.
No, I had it rotated so I could see it and then you rotated it back.
Don't you know by now you're not supposed to fight with the ladies?
Go sit and rotate.
No. This thing was rotated off on the side and I was looking at it and then he goes ahead and moves it towards him.
Go sit and rotate.
No.
We'll see you all later. Thank you very much for coming up. See you in a minute.